Question?
We'll call the December meeting, December 19th meeting of the Marmel City Council to order. The first order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Alderman Vapurzand to lead us in that tonight.
Let's pray. Father, we love you. We thank you for this evening, for the opportunity to gather together, for the health and the strength that you provided for us. We know that every good and perfect gift comes from you, and we're thankful for that. We're thankful for the wisdom that we can ask of you this evening, and we do so. We thank you for our city, for our nation, for the safety that you have provided, the freedoms that we have, for the men and women that provide those for us each and every day. We ask for their protection, and this year as we celebrate the Christmas holiday season with our family, may we be mindful of those who are protecting the freedoms that we have that can't be with theirs. Father, we thank you again for your love for us. Again, we ask for grace, we ask for mercy, we ask for wisdom this evening, and may we honor you in the decisions that are made here, and we'll be thankful for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we want to honor some individuals that have served the city of Marmel, some for a lot longer than others, but all have given up their time and served the citizens of Marmel in some capacity in elected office for the past few years. So at this time, I'm gonna step around and I'm gonna present some plaques, and I'll call everybody up individually, and we'll read the plaques. One of the longest-tenured elected officials is Judge Roger Harrod. Judge, if you'd come up. Judge, I'd like to present this plaque to you on behalf of the city of Marmel, and it says, "The city of Marmel presents to Roger Harrod in recognition and appreciation of your dedicated service as Marmel District Judge, January 2005 through December 2016." Thank you very much.
I just want to say very quickly that serving as district judge has been one of the greatest privileges in my life. I've enjoyed every bit of it. Of course, there were some frustrations, but I've always had excellent support from the city administration, and I've met a lot of people that have come through the court, and some of them have come back and said, "Thanks," when that had been the last thing I would've expected. But strange how things kind of play out from time to time in the courtroom. The district court is one court that a lot of us have a chance to see. A lot of us hopefully will never see Circuit Court, which deals with felonies, but a lot of us speed in many places like that, and hopefully not many of us have DWIs, but the district court is the one that most people see, and it has truly been my privilege to serve there. Twelve years have flown by. Last two times, I was privileged not to have an opponent, and this last time, one of my young red boys said, "Papa, are you being elected this time?" I said, "Well, I'm up for election." He said, "You're on the ballot?" I says, "Yeah." He said, "Well, who are you running against?" I said, "I don't have an opponent." I said, "I'm real fortunate, yeah, I don't have an opponent this time." So he stopped and thought, and I could see the wheels turning, and I said, "But you still gotta be elected?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "So you could still lose?" So I thought, "Thank y'all." Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, Scott? Ms. Scott was an alderman for the city of Marmel, and so I'd like to read her plaque. The city of Marmel, that's good. The city of Marmel presents to Marion Scott in recognition and appreciation of your dedicated service on the Marmel City Council, January 2015 through July 2016. Congratulations, Scott. The only reason Marion got off is because she moved out of my neighborhood, that's why she got off. But no, she sold her house and moved into another house, and so she moved out of her ward, so...
Yes, I did, and in the famous words of Arnold Schwarzenegger, "I give up."
And the next recipient cannot be here tonight, so he's asked someone to stand in for his place, so former mayor Birch Johnson, if you would come up. Preston Lewis served the city of Marmel also on the city council, and he's asked Birch Johnson to receive his recognition for him, and then the plaque reads, "The city of Marmel presents to Preston Lewis in recognition and appreciation of your dedicated services on the Marmel City Council, January 2013 through September 2016." If you would, Birch, tell him to thank you very much.
Okay. The customers we had like you very much.
And we don't have a plaque, and it was an oversight, but we do have one other elected official in the room that is here also, and so we're gonna get the plaque to Mr. Clausen, if you would come up here. Joshua Clausen served as the city clerk from December 2005 until September 2016, and was an alderman prior to that, and I don't know the dates on that, but I think it was 2004 sometime, correct? Probably January 2004 or somewhere in that timeframe through 2005, so he served the city in two capacities. So thank you very much for your service, Mr. Clausen. And we'll get him a plaque so that he can hang it on his wall, 'cause I know he needs something to hang on his wall, so... So see what you've got to look forward to when you retire from these positions, you get, you know, you get honored. Thank you very much, Judge. We do appreciate their service, though. It takes a lot of time at any position, any elected position. You know, the judge didn't point out that, you know, the city attorney might call him in the middle of the night and ask him to appear at an arraignment or something like that, and so they work outside normal hours, just as I know all the city council members work outside normal hours. It could be a phone call at your house, it could be a trip to Kroger that you plan to take five minutes there, and you end up spending an hour and a half there, or it can be somebody coming to your door and talking to you. So I know we all take time outside of our normal work-related items that everybody sees to deal with situations. So on behalf of City Marmel, I think, City of Marmel, I thank everybody for their service. At this time, we have another special guest tonight, and we have Mr. Tad Bohannon with Central Arkansas Water, and he's gonna give us a briefing just on the Marmel transition. Mr. Bohannon?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, alderman. I am, everything I got to say, I have on this little piece of paper, so hopefully I won't be here long unless y'all have a bunch of questions, but just wanted to come and give you all an update. It's been a few months since I came and spoke with you all to let you know what was going on, and if you remember, in March of this year, Central Arkansas Water and Marmel Water Management water portions were consolidated, and we spent the, most of the first part of the year working through consolidating the business procedures and getting services in line and making sure we were all taken care of, and we had a few phone calls, and we came and talked to y'all about that, and I hope everything has quieted down and you all are, if you have any questions, you're calling us and we're getting things resolved, and if we're not, you need to let me know, and I've said that before, but I just want to reinforce that. The next thing that we have coming up, you may get a few phone calls again, too, so I just wanted to come and talk to you for a few minutes. When the two systems were consolidated, we kept using the existing billing system that Marmel Water Management was on, and so we've been operating two different billing systems at Central Arkansas Water since March. We've had Central Arkansas Water on an entire billing system, and then Marmel Water Management old customers on the system. And in January, come January 24th, those two billing systems are gonna be consolidated again, and the new bills will be going out January 24th, are in succession after that. We are running test bills right now, using December billing as an opportunity to say, "Okay, if we print bills in the old Marmel system and we print bills under the new CAW system, do they match?" To make sure that we have all the accounts and all the meter readings and everything going, so we're using this month to make sure that we have that going forward, and then come January 24th, we'll start sending out bills on the new billing system. Not call it a billing system, but part of what we're excited about it is, is much more than that, is a customer service system, so that when somebody calls up, we can pull up entire histories and every service log that's gone on, and anytime anybody's gone out and worked in an area, it appears, and we have that information available at our fingertips, and our people that are out in the field have that information as far as work history available on their iPads and that type of information, so that we can be more responsive to customer needs, and that's what it's all about, is are we satisfied and can we answer our customer questions? So we're excited about the transfer, but the bill will look a little different, you know, and then that raises questions with people, and so we just wanted to make sure that you all knew what was going on. We will send two letters out to all the customers in the first part of January. One will be talking about, that is just coming, and then the second one will be a sample bill saying, "Here's kind of what the new bill is gonna look like and what the format will look like," and then it will be like all the rest of the Central Arkansas Water bills, which actually come out under the name Utility Billing Services. But that's the next thing coming along. And then the last thing is with the completion of the transmission pipeline. We've been working on all the engineering specs for that and drawings, bids were out. We are opening bids on Wednesday for completion of the new transmission line. It will be approved hopefully by the Central Arkansas Water Board at their meeting on January 12th, and the notice to proceed will be issued, and then the contractor basically has 12 months. They must be finished, must be complete with the job. We must be able to run water through that pipeline to serve the citizens of Marmel by February 2nd of 2018. So they open, they'll get their notice to proceed in January of 17, and then they basically have 12 months to finish it up. We've been working, acquiring easements. Initially, we needed 16 easements. We're down to about two, but we're working through those so that we can proceed in an orderly fashion, and we're looking forward to that. But we are offering an incentive for the contractor to get done early, so that we can make the transition even quicker and so that we can change the water sources. And then as soon as we, the transmission pipeline is complete, we'll start working on the hydraulics to flush the system out, and then we'll change from the well water to Central Arkansas water coming off of our Wilson Treatment Plant, and we're looking forward to that, but that will be in 18. And so that's the things I just wanted to come and give you a quick update about, let you know where we were. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to address those. We have been busy out here. Just one example I can give you is, for instance, since March, we've replaced 155 service lines, and that's the line from the main to the house. The reason we're replacing those is we would get notice that there's water bubbling up in my, this is not from the meter to the, meter to the house, it's from the main to the meter, sorry. This is from, you know, there's water bubbling up, or there's water bubbling up in the street, and we'd go out and we'd pull up a, it's polybrobe, brobe lane, well, I can't talk today either, Mayor, we're in the same thing, but we'd go out and pull up a piece of pipe that's about six feet long, and there'd be 10 or 12 clamps on it, and we'd say, "We're not gonna do that anymore." So we've been actually ripping those out and putting in copper service lines. It takes a little longer, you know, we have to dig a little bit more, but in the long run, it means we won't be coming back a second, a third, and a fourth time to make additional repairs. We've identified another 62 of those, 30 of them, we've just put a clamp on, and we're gonna come back to them, we have them tagged, and then the other 32, we've got open work orders for, but we're working on those to get those replaced. But we've been busy, and I hope you've seen our trucks, and I hope we're doing a good job, and if not, please let me know. I'll answer any questions y'all have. I see a light.
Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Harrod. About the new billing system is, how are the people that are on automatic draft gonna be handled? Is it going to have to be kind of, they have to renew that, or?
If they are on auto draft, it's all explained in the letter, but if they're on, if they're on auto draft, it's just gonna roll over. If they are on the user-initiated, where they do electronic fund payment, but they trigger it, then there's some steps that they're gonna have to step through, but if they're on the auto draft, it'll automatically click over, and they'll take care of that. And then part of the other option is, you know, they'll have the option where if they wanna go to paperless billing, they can do that, and there's a few other options that will be explained in the letter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson. Alderman Hope?
Thanks for being here, sir. Since your last meeting, there was a question that I had wished that I would've asked when you were there, so I'm glad to see you back here this evening. On a scale of one to 10, if you don't mind me asking, what would you say, how near were we to what I would call a water Armageddon if you had not have come in?
That's gonna be a tough question to answer. Alderman Mosley asked me before a little bit, and so I'm just gonna say, you know, there is a difference in the scale of operations between a 30-employee utility and a 300-employee utility. There's just a difference in the scale of operations, so we have more procedures in place, we have more, we have engineers on staff, we have more electricians, we have more. So, you know, there are a number of things that we looked at and we went, "Wow, we're gonna change that pretty quick," but I'm not gonna say that if you went out and compared how that was done with another 30-employee utility, that they were doing it wrong. Okay? I will tell you, we have had to replace over the, this was a fairly wet summer. Water sales were not great, yet the pumps and the wells, we had to do some significant amount of work. In fact, one of the, they keep coming and say, "Well, we're gonna build this five and a half miles of pipeline in 12 months." I says, "Yes, we are." And I says, "Because we are not, we're gonna, we're gonna have to get through 2017, but we are not gonna be on the wells in 2018." We had to do a number of substantial things to the wells in 2000, and for this summer to get through this summer, and this was a wet summer. If this was, had been a dry summer, our electricians and our folks would've even been busier, but we had a lot of resources that we could throw at it. Now, could Marmel Water Management made it through? They did very well, you know, in times when they had troubles, but it, we had the resources to be able to throw at it.
All right, I appreciate it. Just wondered.
I will tell you, we are, water quality is very important to us. We, right now, are backfeeding water down at the First Security Bank and the hotel down at, 'cause we wanna run our water through existing Marmel pipes, and we're testing that water daily to see if there's any changes, any impact of having a different type of water running through those pipes. After we test that for a while, then we're gonna expand that. We've already been talking to some homeowners down there in some areas, but there's some isolated areas where we can valve systems off, and we have enough pressure off of our existing lines down there in that area that we can push the water through, and we're gonna continue to do that testing, because when we go to go system-wide, one, we're gonna try to do it quickly as possible, all right, when we make the change, but we wanna make sure that the water quality is gonna be exceptional and that it's gonna work and that changing water sources running through the pipes isn't gonna have an impact. And so we are, we are on top of that, and we are testing it, and we've set up a procedure for it, and we're gonna test it out before we get there, before we go citywide.
Alderman Timmons?
Is there any additional cost to the residents for the change in the billing?
No. No.
Let me point out, though, there will be a rate increase in February, but it's not Central Arkansas Water, it'll be North Rock Wastewater, and it was, it was built in, they've got a, I think it's a 5% increase every year for the next four years, I believe, is what it is.
That's right, and that's just, that's across their whole system. That's not just for Marmel, that's to, that's to everybody on their system that is built in, but that change will occur when they get their February bills, but it's not a, it's not a charge on the, it's not a change as a result of the changing in the billing system.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure, since there'd be a rate increase, it's not related to them changing their bills, though. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is gonna be your funny question for the night.
Okay.
Speaking of fire hydrants, you are going around and geocoding them and painting them silver when you get through. I was talking to two people here a week ago about our doggy hydrants that you're leaving that painted like dogs, and I guess you understand that that's a money maker, or that used to be a money maker for Friends of the Animals in our animal shelter. I think they donated $50 every time. Would it be possible for someone to pick that up and continue doing that, like a silver where you've already coated it and painted it, to come in and repaint it like a dog?
We are not interfering with the doggy fire hydrant program, and we have specifically told them that they can continue that. Only thing we've asked is that if they're gonna do that, then they have to maintain it, as far as, they can't just go till the fire hydrant's falling apart and we have to replace the fire hydrant before they repaint it. The only thing we've said is, you've got to keep it painted, so that we don't have any degradation in the structure of the fire hydrant.
And I assume the number that you're putting on the fire hydrant needs to be there also?
Yes, and it's a tag that's going on the backside, and we have already, we've had numerous discussions with the Friends of...
The Animals.
Friends of the Animals here in Marmel to make sure that that continues.
Okay, I didn't know that, but, okay.
Okay, no problem.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. One last question. How much notice are you gonna try to give the residents when they do the swap to the different water supply?
In 18, when we change waters? We will start putting out notice. We've actually been having discussions about that on the office. I was even joking with them one time about, can we get a, I'm gonna say the nasty word for a city council, but could we get an electronic billboard that was like counting down the days, you know, but no, we're gonna try to get out, it, we're doing things like this, you know, there'll be periodic things, but then come January of 18, we'll really start rolling out the communications to let people know that it's coming.
Thank you.
You know, there's little things that play into it, and I don't wanna oversell the Armageddon thing or whatever, but if somebody's got a hot water heater and it's January and they can make it keep going till March or April of 18, they'll be that much better off. Now, if their water heater falls apart, replace it, because the water being in it for just a few months isn't gonna make that big a difference, but if you can hold out, if you, you know, if you're planning on replacing other things, if you can hold out till 18, that's a, it's not necessarily a bad thing.
Thank you.
Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, to follow up on what you just said, the water that you all have is very much lower in minerals and things like that, so it's better, better for hot water tanks and things. We should get much longer use of those kind of appliances.
Less manganese, less iron.
We've got a kitchen sink where the faucet used to rotate, it's frozen up now, and so we're, we're gonna hold out till we get your water, I think, so...
That'll be good.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate you coming out, Mr. Bohannon.
I appreciate y'all. Have a great Merry Christmas, and we'll talk to y'all later.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item under the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from the December 5th regular meeting. Do you have a copy of those minutes in your packets?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment, and I have two public comment cards, but they're both on items that are on the agenda, so I will hold those to a later date, or later time, not date. Man, hopefully it won't be a later date.
No, I know.
That's gonna be bad if it's in the next day. Next item is financial statement review, and that's done at the second meeting. What'd I do then?
I just got your joke, I'm sorry.
Okay.
About it being the next day.
Next day, okay, yeah, well, it means we'd be here after midnight tonight.
Sorry.
Okay. You lost me now. Financial statement review, that's done at the second meeting of each month. You have a copy of the November financials in your packet, and Ms. Cordy is here, if there's any questions on the financial statement. Alderman Mosley?
Yes, I was just wondering, I was looking at the capital expenditures, the budget, 11-month budget on capital expenditures was like $539,000. What we've actually spent was $383,000, and I was curious as to whether you think we'll catch up to that, the annual budget of $588,000 by the end of the year.
Yes, sir, I think we do, we will catch up. I think we've already encumbered some costs around $200,000 this month in purchase orders and things that are for projects that will be for this current year, so I do think we will catch up on that, and it'll be close to budget.
Okay, so that'll end up...
I can tell you one for sure, is that, I don't know if you've been into Lake Willistee recently, but we've done a park improvement there, and that was done, and we hadn't been, we haven't been billed for it. Now, there's a purchase order out there that's encumbered that, but we haven't been billed for that, so...
Okay.
And that's one, and then I know we've done some server upgrades also that have been done, and they just haven't been billed yet, so...
All right, I noticed our parks expenditures, we've saved quite a bit of money over budget. Is that gonna hold, you think, or is that something else that may kinda come in towards you?
Well, I think that's some of it, a lot of times, they hold some of their bigger projects till they're not as busy with the athletic events, and so that's why they've held some of those. So they're doing their own water project out at Lake, or at Rolling Oaks Soccer Complex. If you go out there, we've laid a whole new water line between the two concession stands. We're doing that within house personnel, but that's what it is. They can't work on those type projects a lot when they have soccer going on and baseball going on, 'cause they're trying to take care of the fields and all that, so there will be some more expenses incurred there also.
All right, that's all, I was checking, kinda looking to see how we're gonna finish the finish line.
Well, I think we'll still be under budget if, if that, you know, now, I would be, I wouldn't guess at a number right now, but we will be under budget, I believe.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions on the financials?
Motion to approve November financials?
Second.
A motion is second to approve November financials? Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Cordy. Next item is procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item under unfinished business is the Central Arkansas Library System board appointment, and we received one application or one person that was interested in serving on the Central Arkansas Library System as Marmel's representative, and it's Ms. Stephanie Gibson Branton, and she could not be here tonight as she's traveling out of town, so, but the deadline for applicants was last Wednesday, and we'd talked to some other people, but no one seemed to be interested in this position, and Ms. Branton was interested in it, so I'd entertain approval to put her on the board, and I mean, unless y'all wanna defer it till you can meet her or something like that.
Please, for Michigan State, motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Ms. Stephanie Gibson Branton to the Central Arkansas, as Marmel's representative to the Central Arkansas Library Service, their board. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Ms. Branton is on the library board as Marmel's representative. Next item is the third reading of ordinance number 918, amending chapter 18 of the Marmel City Code. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Marmel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 918, an ordinance amending chapter 18 of the Marmel City Code to account for the change of the Marmel District Court Judge from a local district judge to a state district judge and for other purposes.
Okay, this item is on third reading, and a motion is in order.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept ordinance 918.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Sanders?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzand?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion... Motion passes. Ordinance is adopted. Next item is the second reading of ordinance number nine nineteen, accepting and confirming dedication of streets and drainage. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine nineteen, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets and drainage in Phase twenty-four A of Country Club of Arkansas, Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, upon fulfillment of certain contingencies and other purposes.
Okay, that item is on second reading, and it will be on third reading at the next meeting, and then a motion would be in order. If there's no discussion on that item, we'll move on to the next item, which is the second reading of ordinance number nine twenty, accepting and confirming dedication of streets and drainage. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine twenty, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets and drainage in the chalets of Country Club, Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, upon fulfillment of certain contingencies and other purposes.
Okay, that item also will be on third reading at the next meeting, and then a motion will be in order. If there's no other discussion on that item, we'll move on to the next item, which is the second reading of ordinance number nine twenty-one, accepting dedication of streets and drainage at gardens at Richview Trails. Madam City Clerk, if you read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine twenty-one, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets and drainage in the gardens of Ridgeview Trails, a smaller lot, single-family detached community, Mammell, Arkansas, upon the fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
This item also will be on third reading at the next meeting, and a motion will be in order at that time. If there's no other discussion, we'll move on to new business. We have resolution number two thousand sixteen dash thirty-eight, creating a code of best practices for property owners' association. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution twenty sixteen dash thirty-eight, a resolution creating a code of best practices for property owners' associations operating within the City of Mammell.
Okay, this is Alderman Mosley's resolution, and he's the sponsor of it, so we'll let, turn the floor over to Alderman Mosley.
Yes, I did include a memo in the packet which kind of explains everything, which is, I guess, up there on the screen. Tried to make it brief, but yet put all the relevant items. This is something that I've been thinking about for quite a while. The city attorney and I have gotten together several times over the last six months, and I actually spoke with a representative of the municipal league about such, actually at the time was considering regulation, and we decided to do more of a code of conduct or best practices. I was kind of inspired by Alderman Vapurzian's efforts on code of conduct for elected officials, and I think that works well, and it's a positive approach, and that was something that I was wanting to do. I don't think we have major problems out here in Mammell with POAs by any means. I think there's some room for improvement. There's one POA that is fairly new, they're having some growing pains, but they're getting there. And I mainly wanted to develop something that POAs could look at and say, okay, here's what we want to get to at some point, you know, to be resident-friendly and that sort of thing, communicate well with our residents and so on. I visited with the mayor, the mayor had a couple of recommended changes, and he may wanna comment on the thing. And once again, this is intended to be a positive approach, and it's not regulation, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the audience or from the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I perused this resolution and the letter, and I have a few issues here that I think we, as a council, should consider strongly. First of all, I hate to see us as a legislative body trying to guide private organizations, five oh one C three organizations, like POAs. Second, there's a comment in here that one of the motivators is to protect the values of homes. This will do nothing to protect the value of a home, and I'm speaking through a voice of experience. When I retired last year, I had the second-largest real estate appraisal company in Arkansas, and I had seven people that did nothing but residential, so I am very familiar with this. Property values are not affected by POAs, except a POA that has amenities, such as mine, can actually add value. For example, we have a boat ramp, a boat launch ramp, that adds value to property owners. But you don't find a diminution in value because of a POA that somebody has complained about. That just doesn't happen. So values is really not an issue. The one thing that it could affect is market time, okay, how long it takes to sell your property. Now, the second thing is, section two of this resolution suggests that the city clerk would maintain records for people that had comments to make about a POA. Now, POAs are groups of people, and you're always gonna find a small group that's gonna be whiners and complainers, and they're gonna want recourse against the POA, and this'll be one way, is to go write a letter, bring it to City Hall. The POA can then respond to it, more filing. I think our city clerk has enough to do right now without having to keep track of this kind of stuff, and that's not to mention the people that walk in the door that wanna see the file, because somebody's gotta service them too. So we're gonna be investing a lot of time and energy and city resources into this. We could, we could. Now, another thing is, it's gonna be very hard, if we do this, it's gonna be very hard to turn down the next five oh one C three that comes to us. For example, the Mammell Players, how about Friends of Lake Willistee? There's any number of non-governmental, nonprofit organizations around here, and there is a potential that they will come to us and want to do the same thing. In a absolute worst-case scenario, I don't think it would happen, we could even potentially end up having to hire another person, try to monitor this system that we're creating here. So I'm dead set against piling more work on our city clerk. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Saunders. Alderman Timmons?
And I see that we're supposed to vote on this tonight. I'd like to get more information before, I'd like to talk to the POA and see what they think about it, or get their kind of, their input on it. I don't think I have enough information to vote tonight on this.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, sir, Alderman Saunders.
You said, you used, when you said POA, you were speaking in the singular. Here's another point, we have a lot of POAs in Mammell.
POAs.
Okay, okay, I missed that. And that's part of the problem for the city clerk, we've got a lot of POAs, and trying to maintain all those files is a job.
Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I'd like to just respond to Alderman Saunders' comments there a little bit. The, I don't anticipate any big deal as far as a file down at City Hall, it could just be one of those brown binders where if somebody wanted to bring in a letter and deposit it in there and say, "My POA didn't call me back," or something like that, and maybe their POA will call them back after that, and they'll say, "I'd like to take that letter out of the file." But I don't see this being any kind of a burdensome thing. It could be, I guess, electronic or just a brown file. The idea is to perhaps, I guess, give a POA an incentive to resolve some of these issues as they come along. I figured Alderman Saunders would have a few comments. With full disclosure, he was president of our neighborhood POA for a period of time, and so he's probably giving you the standpoint of a POA that really, you know, we really don't want anybody watching much of anything. Again, this whole thing is designed to be a, something to protect the residents of this community, and something to make this a residence-sensitive community. If we have some standards out there and we say we expect our POAs to do these things, it should be a positive effect. People should come to town that may have had bad experiences with POAs in West Little Rock or something like that, say, "Okay, Mammell's asking them to be residence-sensitive."
Or good experiences.
Pardon me?
I said bad or good experiences.
Pardon, yeah, bad or good or whatever, but the idea is to have some kind of standard, and that's all I'm asking to do here with this. Anything else?
We get some more lights on, so.
All right.
Alderman Vapurzian?
Attorney Norris, if you're gonna formulate a POA, do you not have to abide by certain standards? Legal, aren't there legal ramifications that have to be met to begin with? Or is it?
That's kind of a broad question, but I think generally speaking, yes, I mean, there's laws that apply to...
And you could sue your POA, correct?
Yes.
You, as a resident or a member of the POA, could sue. The city attorney...
If I had a grievance.
Yeah, yeah.
And just to follow up, lest there be any confusion, the idea isn't with this resolution that the city would be taking
Right.
any action against POAs. The only action the city is taking, according to this resolution, is the maintenance of a file whereby people could submit things, and it would be stored there, and then conversely, that people be able to go and look at.
As the head of a five oh one C three, I don't want a little brown binder anywhere in City Hall on my five oh one C three. Keep your hands off my five oh one C three. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Vapurzian. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a good segue to what I wanted to ask. I know that Alderman Mosley had mentioned that he consulted with the mayor and with the city attorney and with municipal league, so...
That's correct.
Did we, was there any consultation with the POAs that are in the city right now? I think it'd be a good idea if we're gonna, you know, enact something with the POAs that are already in place, that we would get some input from them and how they feel about, or what they view as best practices, you know? Usually, whenever you do, you get a group of people and they all become, you have the, come together and you wanna make best practices or procedures or policies, you get groups from all sides to figure out those best practices, and then you agree on them, or you try to agree on them. So my question is, were they consulted in any manner?
I can answer that. I did meet with one POA, we have one in our ward that I've never heard a single complaint on, so I went and visited with a representative and said, "Why have I never heard of a single complaint on your POA?" And he said, "I don't know," but he, you know, he told me what they did and that sort of thing, and I ran some of the, this thing wasn't anywhere close to final form, I ran some ideas by. He didn't have any major problems with it. I have not met with, really, in some cases, I, you know, there probably is gonna be some reluctance, they're not gonna be coming here demanding that we put a code of conduct or best practices in place. It's a, anyway, the...
I think I'd feel more comfortable if we did have some input from more than one POA in the city. That's where I feel. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Hope?
Thank you. Sitting here listening, I certainly was oblivious to, you know, the concept. First question is basically, what was the items that led up to feeling that we, that this is needed? Secondly, how does this differ from what code enforcement does? If there's best practices or bad practices or whatever, I certainly have had some bad practices in my neighborhood. What is the legal ramification of any kind of dispute over this, if any? So, and neighborhoods like mine, we don't have a best practices policy, so certain parts of our city, well, we live here, so we have best practices procedure, but over here, we all just do whatever you wanna do. So it sort of like unbalances us as a neighborhood or somehow or another, in my mind. I'm proud of my neighborhood, and I think it's well-kept, but I don't see that one neighborhood should have this statement of whatever it is, implication of control or monitoring or however you wanna address it. It's not that I'm have an objection to it, but I, as Alderman Timmons said, is it possible or would the council be interested in having a committee, one member from each ward, as a committee and discuss it and bring it back a recommendation or something?
Do you...
Mind's all questions, okay.
Do you have a POA over there in your neighborhood?
No, sir.
Okay, that's not applicable there. There was somebody else I wanted to respond to.
How many POAs are in the city?
Pardon me, how many are in the city?
Your estimate?
I don't know, we have at least four in our ward, there may be a couple more that are being formed with new neighborhoods over in the country club area and that sort of thing. And I don't know citywide, there's, Osage Falls has a POA. There's also things called homeowners' associations, but that's not the same thing, that's usually for like mountain terraces where you're maintaining properties, buildings and that sort of thing. I have not extended it to that. I'm trying to keep it simple here. POAs are not regulated by anybody. The, a resident can sue a POA, but it's gonna take you several thousand dollars to do it. A lot of times, the fee, annual fee's a hundred and fifty bucks, and a lot of people just say, "Gee, I wish somebody was watching these things." There's not, the Attorney General doesn't regulate it, the Public Service Commission doesn't regulate them. It's probably something that the state needs to have, some type of a thing. But to answer your question, as far as what caused this, I've just, I've gotten a lot of complaints, some minor, some major, since I've been Alderman and before, and I've experienced a few frustrations myself in the thirty years that I've lived here in Mammell. And so I'm trying to put forth something that's positive, say, "Let's ascribe to this. I could live without your brown file if that's a major problem for you," and it sounds like it is.
It just sounds like we're creating more government.
Yeah, if that's a major problem, we can dispense with that.
I just...
But the idea was to put forth some things, let's do these things, let's be resident-friendly and go on our merry way.
But if we've got fifteen or twenty different POA entities in our city, I'm sure that they would like to know what's going on, what we're about to do. I'm sure they would like to be well-informed. We have two golf courses, we would get both of their inputs if we were gonna do something with the golf courses.
It doesn't have anything to do with the golf.
I know, I know, but it would be unwise for us to make a decision with all these people involved in them to say, "Hey, I think we could stir an unnecessary pot."
We may have a couple of public comments
We do.
That might as well listen to those.
Well, let's go through the Aldermans and then comments, and then we'll go to their... Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I just don't see value added in trying to regulate these kind of entities.
Again, this isn't a regulation... Again, this isn't a regulation.
Well, it's going to pave the way. I can guarantee you that. This is a resolution, and once the city takes a stand, then I see that broadening. And I'm just not in favor of it. I think, I think POAs is something that the members can approach P O A leadership and discuss their items, and I don't think it's an issue. I think this is an area that we just don't need to get into as a regulatory body, and that's what we are. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree a hundred percent with Alderman Kelly. And while this is not a regulatory resolution, it certainly gives the appearance that we're trying to do some regulating here. Now, property owners' associations, and I was, I'll just, I wasn't going to bring it up, but I was president of my P O A for nine years. And I am kind of familiar with it. They're governed by, they are governed by the property owners. If the property owners pay their dues and they come to meetings, as far as I know, every P O A is governed by a board that has bylaws. And the bylaws, every one that I've seen, and by the way, I've helped write these bylaws for other organizations. They virtually all have annual meetings. That's where they pick their board of directors. If they're dissatisfied with people, they do have recourse, okay? Just like the citizens have recourse with us, you know? They can vote us out. So at annual meetings, they get feedback on finances. I've never heard of a P O A that doesn't do that. If you ask a P O A for information about their finances, where they're spending their money, I can't imagine a P O A hiding that information. I don't even know why they would want to. So there is govern, there is governing going on, and it comes from the property owners. And I don't think we should give the impression that it's trying to come from us. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Saunders. I do have two cards from the public that wishes to speak, and we'd like to hear from them. At this time, we'd hear from Mr. Gibb Carpenter.
Gibb Carpenter, 123 Osage, Mammell. You guys collectively have pretty much said everything I was going to say. I'll start off, just kind of a clarification. Property owners' associations are not 501(c)(3). That's a charitable, tax-deductible IRS classification. What they are in the IRS code, there is a homeowners' association sub-paragraph, and they, as long as they're not paying employees and making a profit and distributing profits, they are tax-free to the association, but it is not a tax deduction to the members. It may shock y'all, but I'm not going to get up here and jump up and down and object to this. Honestly, I, I see it as a solution to looking for a problem, that it's totally unnecessary. And several of you have kind of alluded to that fact tonight. Several of the things that I had highlighted, the second whereas is to preserve quality. Well, that's the whole purpose of a P A, P O A. That's in the mission statements of the POAs, is to preserve quality. That's what the homeowners and property owners want to do. There's no reference to homeowners' associations. Alderman Mosley mentioned that, so I guess that's a distinction that is irrelevant. Property owners' associations and homeowners' associations tend to get used interchangeably, and they are different. There's a state law that governs property owners' associations that are known as horizontal property regimes, and that doesn't even apply here. Those are folks that are in the same building that commonly own the property of that building. But the property owners and homeowners' associations exist generally for the care and maintenance of the common areas and for amenities. The comments about the city clerk being in a position to collect and share concerns, that already exists. It's called the internet. And a lot of what I'm hearing has to do about complaints, grievances, gripes. It does happen. And sometimes, I've been doing POAs for twenty-five years in Oklahoma and now here, sometimes everybody is not happy with the resolution. You guys might be familiar with that process. I think it probably happens in city government, too. So, yeah, it can, it can happen with POAs. But like I said, I think what you have here is a solution looking for a problem. Now I'm going to start jumping up and down. And some of you have already alluded to this, too. A couple of years ago, we had a situation that a city ordinance was considered, and it, all of the preparation for that specifically excluded the developers that the ordinance affected. And when we discussed that fact, when we discovered it, that was intentional. It was to, it was the intention of the people pushing that legislation to exclude them. Now, I did a little poll. Country Club of Arkansas, Fairway Woods, Osage Falls, North Fairway Loop, and I'm Mammell Valley Estates, none of us were communicated, consulted. There was no consideration, no input. And this is a resolution. This is going to get voted on and enacted tonight. And, and all of those associations were totally unaware of it. Now, yes, the city clerk puts out notification, and that's how, that's the reason I'm here. But, and I'm not blaming y'all, okay? But if we're going to have meaningful legislation, we're a city, but we're also a community, and communities have stakeholders. And you know what? Some of us really know what we're talking about, and we can give valuable input and advice, but not if we're excluded. So that's why I wanted to come up tonight and remind y'all that we're available, we are motivated. That's the purpose of developers and purpose of property owners' associations, is to improve the quality. And if there's some piece of legislation that helps that, then, then we're in favor of it. You know, this is, it's so voluntary, section two, it's so, I'm not even, you guys can read that. So I'm not objecting to it because it really doesn't mean anything. But, but don't do it in the dark of night. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. The other card I have is from Mr. John Todd. Okay, Mr. Todd says there's nothing left for him to say, so, for the record. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2016-38.
Have a motion and a second that we approve Resolution Number 2016-38. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Motion fails. And I guess the, as per suggestion by Mr. Carpenter, is maybe if you want to work on something, I would get with POAs and, and come, come together with them and see if they, you know, can come up with something.
Yeah, I do appreciate Mr. Carpenter's comments. And from what I'm hearing is he's not so opposed to some of those standards or whatever. It's just that, I guess he's saying, let's, let's talk about it first. All right. Thank you all. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. We appreciate you coming tonight, Mr. Carpenter, and you, Mr. Todd, also, even though you didn't speak, so. Next item is Resolution Number 2016-39, approving an operating budget for 2017. You have a copy of the budget in your packet, and you were hand-delivered one to your door on Friday afternoon. I do want to make one comment, that we did increase the general fund budget after our last meeting by eleven thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That was to cover insurance changes to family within some of the departments and adding people that had enrolled in pension that weren't eligible until next year. And so you have to be here a year before you're eligible for pension, and the city matches a portion of that. And so we had individuals do that, and we had individuals that changed from single to family insurance as of December 31st to January 1st. And so that increased the, the amount that we had to add to the fund balance by eleven thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That is reflected in the, the budget that you received. Alderman Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a motion that we accept Resolution 2016-39.
Second.
It's been motion second to the council adopt Resolution 2016-39. Is there any discussion on that motion? Alderman Mosley?
Yes, I just wanted to, we, in our budget workshops and everything, we, we kind of talked about who's in favor of the budget the way it is and who wasn't. And at the time, I, I was, I had some concerns, and I still do, and I will be a no vote tonight, but I just wanted to explain that, and it is essentially what I brought up the other night. We, you know, on paper, it looks like we'll be going into the whole 1.5 million dollars for the year. And I, I don't, in any stretch of my imagination, think that will be that much, based on how the mayor and the department heads performed this past year. We basically budgeted a half a million dollars of a deficit last year, and we're coming out what looks to be maybe four hundred thousand to the plus, which is a real testament to, to some things and how, and perhaps our good fortune that some of the trash trucks and things did not break.
That's some of it. I'd rather be lucky than good some days, so.
But 1.5 million is more than I can, I can go with, because I know we will have a deficit. We have a fire truck in there for four or five hundred thousand dollars, and that's, that's okay. That's the capital expenditure. I don't have a problem with that. I do, I do have, the biggest, I guess, there's two things that give me a little bit of headache. One is that we would be adding, I think, eleven employees, nine that would be full-time, two that would be part-time, at a time when our, our revenue is really not increasing that much. We're, we're having about one, eleven point six, eleven point eight million dollars in revenue for the last four or five years. And I, I just have concerns about adding people. I don't want to ever have to come to the people and say, look, we've, we've kind of been spending more than we should. We're going to have to raise taxes at some point, and I sure don't want to lay anybody off or cut services at some point. So I have a little concern about that. And then two, I was really, I felt like we needed to be real careful and hang on to reserves this interchange for a third entrance is coming up, and we don't know how much our share is going to be. It could be anywhere from a couple of million to five million or who knows what. So I'll be a no vote just on those, on those two things. But I do appreciate the city, and the mayor seems to have a good handle on, on the numbers, and, and I do appreciate that. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Alderman Mosley. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2016-39, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passes. Next item is Resolution Number 2016-40, approving the disposal of city surplus property. Madam City Clerk, if you'll read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2016-40, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
This is a, a list of equipment and a lot of items that have been sitting out at public works for years. It's, it's attachments to equipment, and then it's actual equipment itself. I mean, and then some, a ninety-eight van and a ninety-eight one-ton truck, and 2003 Chevrolet van, and a 2001 dump truck, and a Ford dump truck, and then an old forklift. So, I mean, it's just things like that. And they're just trying to clean that area up and dispose of these. They will, they will be put on gov deals to try to sell, is what we'll try to do, and try to get some value for them. If we can't get anything on that, then it'll be sold for scrap values, what it'll be sold Alderman Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept 2016-40.
Second.
A motion second to adopt Resolution 2016-40. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is Resolution 2016-41, amending the 2016 general fund budget. And Madam City Clerk, if you'll read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council, City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2016-41, a resolution to amend the 2016 Mammell general fund budget.
Okay. Normally on a bu, a fund, on amendment to the budget, we've talked about, we would read it one time and then defer it. And I know that's the plan and, and the goal, but we received this bill after our last council meeting, and it's a bill from the Plaski County Election Commission. I even told you, I didn't think we were going to get a bill because we didn't have anybody on the ballot. That was my understanding. But there's a state statute, and I included it in your packet, and it talks about that. And let me explain, the primary, the primary in March now is paid for by the state, and then in the general election is paid for by the county government. And basically what it says is the county government will pay for all the election expenses except, and then there's always the exception. Under item two, it says, "Any city or incorporated town shall reimburse the county board of election commissioners for the expenses of the election in an amount equal to a figure derived by multiplying fifty percent of the total cost of each election by a fraction." And the fraction is the numerator of which shall be the number of voters from the city or incorporated town casting ballots in each election prepared by the county board, and the denominator of which shall be the total number of voters casting ballots in each election. So they took the number of voters registered in Mammell that voted in the general election, divided that by the number of Plaski County registered voters, and that's how they came up with the percentage that we pay. We'd budgeted ten thousand dollars, which had been sufficient in years past, other than when we had a special election. And so then we got our bill, and it was thirteen thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars. I think a little bit of that is contributed, or is attributed to the, the number of voters that voted. Yeah, there was, there was, there was a particular race that I think got a lot of people out to vote. And so I think this is probably a little bit out of the norm for us typically, but we, we kind of probably need to take that into account, that we may have to raise that budget in 2018, a little bit above ten thousand, but I don't know that you raised it to fourteen because it'll be an off-presidential election, if that tells you what I think the excitement was caused by, or the voter turnout. So we need to pay this by the 29th of December. It's what the county is asking for, and so that's why I went ahead and put it on here for action tonight. And I will try to answer any questions that you have.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve Resolution 2016-41. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much. And I apologize that I was misled on this, but I called the election commission to verify. I said, wait a minute, guys, we didn't even have anybody on the ballot. We shouldn't have to pay. And he quickly said, there's a state statute you, you have to pay. You know, it didn't take him long.
I was going to say, did he answer it that quickly?
Oh, he did, yeah.
Yeah, he was ready.
Yeah, he was ready, yeah. I did tell him I'd like to see a breakdown of the numerator next time, though. I'd just like to see our number of voters. I mean, you know, just to see it. So he said, okay. So we'll see if he includes it or not, but, you know, he was quick to say okay on that, Now, moving on to Mayor's comments, just since this is our last meeting of the year, just want to miss, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I guess if we'd had Christmas this past weekend, we could have had a white Christmas almost with the temperatures that we had. It's pretty strange. A week ago Saturday, it was like thirty-three degrees that day, you know? And then on this past Saturday, we had seventy-six degree weather, so it doesn't even feel like Christmas. It feels like springtime or something like that. And then the next day, the highs twenty-four or something like that. And told someone the other, or told someone today and yesterday that, you know, always said, live in Arkansas, because if you don't like the weather, it'll change. And I mean, it, the drastic change that we've had. But, so now, as we're getting into the cool weather again, it's, it seems like Christmas. And I think if you drive around town, you see all the Christmas lights. So I think everybody's getting ready for Christmas. And what I, what I do want to point out, and this wasn't on my original agenda, is that we, we actually caught some people today, thanks to our chief of police, Mr. Sam Williams. We caught some home burglars that were, just left the scene of a crime. And then we're able to hopefully solve some other crimes. So they were trying to take Christmas away from some people. And we were able to catch them because of a neighbor called it in, gave a great description of the vehicle and the, the people that had left the residence. And Chief Williams saw them driving down the boulevard, was able to make a stop. And therefore, it looks like we're going to be able to solve some home burglaries in Marmel. So, so great job by the police department. And so able to get some bodies, goods back the same day they were taken. And so that's, you know, helps their Christmas. So I know that. Now, they may have to repair a door or something like that, but at least they got their possessions back. And then January third council meeting, everybody that was reelected will need to be sworn in. So we will do that at the start of that meeting. We'll have, the plan is to have Judge Bailey here at that time and do a swearing in ceremony for all the position ones. So. Yeah. And the plan is, yeah, the plan is right now, we're going to probably do a meet and greet for Judge Bailey immediately preceding that meeting. So probably around five o'clock, we'll just start a little meet and greet so that she can be here. And if you want, you know, she, you met her the other night, but you, she stood in front of us for two or three minutes. But if you want to come talk to Judge Bailey, you're welcome to do that. And so we're going to put an invitation out and try to get some people to come by and meet Judge Bailey. Then we'll go right in. And we'll have some cookies and punch or water or something. We won't, no cake and, you know, huge hors d'oeuvres or anything like that. But we'll do something small. And then we will have the swearing in ceremony and then go right into our January third meeting. So everybody that's sitting here will be at that meeting. So it's a little different. I mean, the January third meeting is a little different this time because we won't have anybody new coming on board because of our new people already on board. So, you know, so, so that worked out. So, but the, the other thing is, is you will hear, if you go to the Arkansas Municipal League meeting, you'll hear that, well, the first meeting of the year, you have to organize your city council. You have to go over how you do everything and how you present a motion and how you, you do resolutions, all that. Ours is already codified. So we already have that set. We'll have a copy of that in the packet for January third, but we don't have to reorganize every year. I think whoever came up with that idea many years ago did a great job in doing that. It basically lays all that out and what order we go in and how we do it and all that. And so I think it's great that we don't spend the first meeting deciding how we're going to bring something up for discussion. So I think that's great. So January third will be a, hopefully a joyful occasion. And then we'll go start on our business. So. And then the planning commission liaison schedule, we still have, everybody's signed up for one spot and we still have a couple of spots if anybody's interested. So March twenty-third or July the twenty-seventh is available if anybody wants it. They can have it. Some people have their names down here twice, so you're welcome to have your name twice if you would like it. If you don't, we'll fill those in with somebody else. So just, those are available if you want to attend, March twenty-third or July twenty-seventh. The next item is the planning commission report. And who had that? Mark did, that's right, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, the planning commission met and it was another speed record, twelve-minute, fourteen-minute meeting. There were three orders of new business, a revised landscape plan for all, for the Marmel library expansion, and a revised commercial building design for the Marmel library expansion. Both of those passed within the planning commission. And then the preliminary development plan for the Marmel lib, Marmel library expansion was passed on to the city for a vote. And I believe that'll come on the next.
It'll be on January third.
The next agenda. And that concludes my summary of the planning commission.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman's comments? All right. Mr. City Attorney?
I wanted to advise you all of a new lawsuit filed against the city in late last week. The city was served by a lawsuit from Stephen and Cheryl Mosley against Jim Morley in his official capacity and the city of Marmel. I included a brief, brief overview of what that was in the council packet. If anyone has any questions, I'm free to answer that. If anyone would like a copy, I can get you a copy. And that's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
I do have a question.
Okay, all right, Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the Mr. City Attorney. What is the latest on our other lawsuits that's pending?
There is currently a hearing on, if you're referring to the O'Leary lawsuit.
Yes, I am.
That is set for a hearing on the motions for summary judgment on January twenty-third at one thirty PM in Judge Gray's office. At that point, and just to give you all an overview, all sides have filed motions for summary judgment arguing that they're entitled to judgment as a matter of law. And so the, a very likely or possible outcome from that hearing is that the judge will make a determination as to essentially who wins the lawsuit. One possibility is that the judge finds that they, that there's an issue that needs to go to trial. So after that hearing is when we'll find out if there will be a trial or if it's resolved. Now, just because the hearing is on that date does not mean we will find out the outcome of that hearing on that date. The last hearing we had, it took several months before we found out, you know, the results of that. Interestingly, it's the same judge as, as, it's Judge Gray, who's the same judge we have in the Mosley lawsuit. Just as a Jeopardy question.
And, and they just take a rotation. So it just.
It just randomly ended up that way.
Randomly falls. So it wasn't that they said, well, she's already handling one city of Marmel lawsuit. But no, so. Madam City Clerk, any comment?
I don't have anything.
All right. If there's no other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Have a motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Meeting is adjourned.